Lauren, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. I just changed my audio. I feel like we're having deja vu.
Mayor Moore, it is 7:00 PM. If you'd like to call the meeting to order.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order, the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the Successor Agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. Ms. Burgess, if we could have a roll call?
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Sparks?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here. Thank you. And Mr. Obed, if you would introduce our staff present tonight?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. So you have me, obviously, Damian Obed, I'm the city manager here. We also have Angela Corde, the Director of Administrative Services, Craig Scott, Director of Public Works, City Engineer, Tom Barker, who is our City Attorney, John Caldwell, who is our Civil Engineer, will be doing a presentation tonight on the Traffic Safety Project. We also have Michael Parrish, our Chief Police Chief, Noah Ouch, our Director of Community Development, and of course, Lauren Burgess, our City Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. Now, if you would all kindly join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. So I will be looking for an approval of the minutes and of the Kattati City Council regular meeting, February 9th, 2021.
Move to approve. This is Councilmember Harvey.
Second, is Councilmember Ford?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Burgess, would you take a roll call, please?
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. Thank you very much, Ms. Burgess. And now I will go through announcements for those that may not have attended a council meeting before and those in the virtual world. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. Meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at citykattatacity.org. Citizens interested in receiving City Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle, N-I-X-L-E, dot com or by texting your zip code 919312888777. It's our top priority to provide you with prompt and comprehensive customer service, and we continue to offer all city services. However, in the interest of public health, City Hall is currently closed to walk-in traffic due to the current Health Officer Order. During this time, our services have temporarily transitioned to phone and web-based as well as appointments by request. Staff continue to be available to answer your questions 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM, Monday through Thursday. Like always, we'd love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@kattatacity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels, available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. So now we have approval of the final agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda, Mr. Obed?
Mayor, no proposed changes, although I will note there's a correction on the consent calendar when we get to that point.
Thank you very much. And now we will go on to citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-2, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to three minutes in lane per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in lane for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time for a reasonable time where a disability or a combination has been requested. So with that in mind, we will go over to citizens' business. Ms. Burgess, if you would check if we have any attendees interested?
Thank you, Mayor Moore, for our attendees tonight. If you can use your raise hand icon on your desktop or smart device. Otherwise, you can also dial *9 from your telephone. And it appears there is no public comment.
Thank you very much. Now we will move on to the consent calendar. I will make reference to item 8B? No, 8A. Regarding, oh, I'm sorry, that is not... Consent calendar, item 8...
Consent calendar, item 8B, I believe.
Thank you very much. I messed up my agenda there. And we have a correction in the subject of the consent agenda items staff report. They indicated that it is a Kessing Ranch subdivision and it is the Jamie Lane subdivision, so we can make that correction. And with that in mind, unless anybody has any issues or questions on the existing consent, I would be looking for a motion.
I'd be happy to move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
This is Councilmember Harvey. I'd be happy to second with the changes made.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Ms. Burgess, if you would do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. Thank you very much. Now we can move on to direction on future agenda items. Do we have any requests from the existing council on any future agenda items at this time?
Mayor, Mayor Moore?
Councilmember Harvey, I don't see your hand raised, but go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I didn't know which hand raised, this hand, that hand. I think it would be worthwhile, based upon a presentation that we saw this week at the Snoke County Waste Management Agency for the council to receive a presentation on the changes that will impact us with 1383. So I think that would be worthwhile for us to see that presentation.
Thank you. That would be great. Any other suggestions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. We have item 10A, Instruction Ordinance Amending and Restating portions of Chapter 13.42, Title 13 of the Kattati Municipal Code to revise how sewer service charges are calculated. And I believe this is going more to Mr. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. This item is a proposed revision to the city's municipal code regarding how we charge for our sewer rates, for use of our sewer collection system. So, next slide, please. Unlike the water system where we can put meters on individual services, that would not be a good idea for the sewer services because the meters would clog up and potentially back up, causing lots of problems, as you can imagine. So we use the water meter as a surrogate for the estimate of the sewer's usage. And this is an industry practice. It's widespread. And so what typically does, and our sewer code reflects this currently, is we'll use the lowest four months typically in the wintertime to estimate what the flow is down the sewer for an individual customer. And so, because the idea there is that the outdoor use is minimal or if not zero, and so all of that water use would be discharged down the sewer. So for existing customers, that works out because in the summertime, their use grows because of outdoor irrigation typically. And but their use would be, sewer use would be based on that wintertime use. There are some situations where that doesn't work. But parking the existing customers off to the side here, we've got new customers that come online. And so there's another methodology for those folks because we don't have a historical use for that customer. If they were a new customer in July or what have you, you obviously don't have those four, you know, November through February months to lean on. So we have, by resolution, per capita factors that will say, hey, how many folks do you have in that household? And multiply it by that per capita household use, which is 5,004 gallons per billing period. And so that's what everybody uses. And we went ahead and evaluated what local agencies of Snoke County use. And we found out that just about everybody uses it except for Giltzberg. And then what prompted this is we've gotten customer feedback of where that calculation method doesn't work. There's some, a very small percentage of the customers, there's instances, and we'll talk about that in this presentation of where their wintertime use turns out not to be a good estimate of their sewage volume. So these changes to the municipal code, which is just in a few paragraphs, only apply to the residential customers. The residential customers, the vast majority of them, in fact, I'm not aware of any that have separate irrigation meters. They all just have one meter that provides water for their home and for irrigation. All the non-residential customers, businesses, industries, so forth, we require them to have a separate irrigation for their building, their indoor use, a separate one for their irrigation. So this calculation isn't necessary. We just use their indoor water use meter. And next slide, please. So the code changes that we're proposing address situation, well, let me just read it here. It's basically the current practice and less, their actual water use is less. So as I had mentioned, we've gotten feedback from customers where the current practice doesn't work for them because in the springtime, they get, their water bill is based on a volume that's that's more than what their actual water bill is. So it's, and there's not a lot of the customers. So these changes accommodate those. Next slide, please. And the purpose of this slide wasn't necessarily to confuse everybody, but be on high alert here. We're trying to look at, we're parse out all the different instances, how rare that they might be, that our current practice doesn't, you know, it misrepresents, is not a good representation of what their sewer discharge is. So we've got new customers that use a lot less water than the average per capita factors. So they come online, they've got very little outdoor use. Let's say they're, they come online in June or July, let's say, and they're given a per capita use to base their volume charge on. And they're, they look at their water bill and like, hey, why is my water bill so much lower than this calculated number? And so we get, on average, just for the last year, we got about one new customer a day. We get 364 new customers last year. So just under, you know, one a day. And you can tell... So this new calculation would apply to these folks that are not only new customers, but they have this per capita use, actual use, that's much lower than the per capita average. I hope you're following. And once, that's good until the four wintertime months come along and then that calculation kicks in. So the adjustment to the water use for this sewer rate is not really a big, a big impact to our revenues. You could probably, you see in the staff report, we estimated it was between $3,500 and $26,000 per year. And that's at a total revenues of 2.8 million. So it's anywhere a tenth of, less than a tenth of a percent to, on the worst case scenario, up to a percent reduction in our revenues. But that's just a really rough calculation. We think it's more towards the lower side of that. Okay, so then you've got existing customers that, let's say, they've logged their wintertime use. And then they go on a tear, and we know people like this, and they install low-flesh toilets and they make tremendous changes in their water use and they have got very little outdoor water use. And so that scenario, you could see that their actual water use would come in lower than their wintertime use. So that happens. It's very rare. But you just need one or two customers like that. And, you know, understandably, they get kind of confused and a little bit irate about that. So those two scenarios, scenario one and two, we're looking at those customers seeing, at least for a short period of time, a reduction in their water use or their sewer bill. And scenarios three and four, let's go with three. You've got an existing customer, they're a classic customer. They have a classic sort of demand pattern where in the wintertime, it's low. Summertime, it's high. So they would probably be unaffected. Their sewer bill would not be impacted. Scenario four, where you have customers that use above-average use, that's not affected because that above-average use would be reflected in that wintertime averaging. So this change to the code just allows us to, instead of being cemented to that four lowest months of the year, if a low month of water use comes along that's lower than that, we can use it. And what makes this all possible, and another reason besides feedback that we've received of doing it right now, is that we have upgraded our billing system, which has, we can program an algorithm in there. The algorithm can just automatically compare those two bills, you know, sort of the current basis to the brand-new water use that comes in. And it just decides without any input from staff, you know, just to use the lower of the two. So that's what makes this all practical. This methodology, prior to upgrading the billing system, was not practical. I should also mention that, this is probably, should have mentioned it way back in the beginning of the presentation. I should also mention that, this is probably, should have mentioned it way back in the beginning of the presentation, but the sewer rate is comprised of a fixed base charge, and then a variable charge, which is just on the volume of the flow. And so what we're talking about tonight is on that piece that's related to the volume. The base, we're not changing the way the base flow fee rate is calculated. That is done through a rate study that we do every two or three years. And what he gives us a five-year update to our five-year rate adjustment program. So that's independent of this. This is just focused on how do we improve our way of estimating the amount of wastewater that goes down the pipe? So that's all this is focused on. And the next slide is the recommendations. You flip to the next slide, please. And so with ordinance changes, the step is to first introduce the ordinance, and that's what we're doing tonight. And so we would look for a motion to introduce the ordinance. And then at the following council meeting, if this passes tonight, it would be voted on for approval. And then sometime after that, it would become part of our municipal code. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Do we have any, okay, Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, just so I'm clear, the only change is we're making it so that if somebody uses less water in June and July than they did in January and February, the sewer charge will be based on the June and July actual, rather than the January and February actual.
That's correct. And then there is another instance where for new customers, you've got that per capita calculation that we just give them. And in the past, that's what they had to stick with. But now we get to compare their water use to that per capita calculation. We get to use the lower of the two.
Okay, so let me follow up a little. So I get that, and that sounds simple, but the changes proposed to the code remove all description of what the volume factor is. And I'm concerned, it's taken out the reference to the two lowest billing periods. It just says, "Volume factor shall be reevaluated using methodology determined by the city prior to the September billing period each year," where it used to say, "The volume factor is the two lowest billing periods." And I'm concerned that we're just removing, like, a customer can't look at the code anymore to tell how their sewage, their sewer bill is calculated. So I'm wondering where that methodology goes now, since you're proposing to take it out of the code.
What it does is it kind of makes it, it doesn't matter about the wintertime use, it's more important about we're trying to estimate the sewer flows. So by removing that, we're giving staff more latitude to meet that intention. I know that the language, proposed language change is really not very intuitive. But it does remove those constraints on us. And we can then strive to use the lowest of those two choices.
But, Mr. Mayor, can I continue to follow up?
Absolutely.
Sorry. So I'm still unclear. The code no longer says what the volume factor is. And so I'm confused about, it used to say it's the two lowest billing periods, and now we're taking that out. So what is the volume factor going to be going forward?
Craig, do you mind if I jump in?
Sure.
Or Damian? So because there is the differential between the billing periods, because we have billing periods that could also be partial billing periods. So we, getting into the minutia of, okay, it has to be two full billing periods that are the lowest billing periods. And so it moves that from the policy into our procedures. And so we would have those internal procedures posted on our website, just like we have for all of our, how do we calculate your water bill? Our step-by-step guide on how those are calculated. And so that's transparent to our community as to how that is. I understand it's not in there specifically, but that would be what's disclosed, is now it's in our procedures for that step-by-step process. I think that was the intention.
Thanks.
Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you. The way it reads now, it says that the factor shall be reevaluated prior to the September billing period each year. That sort of looks to me as though this change can't really, the change to the volume factor within your procedure couldn't really be changed until right before the September billing. But am I misunderstanding that? Can we make that change? Do you have the latitude if we make this change to the ordinance to change that now? Does that question make sense?
Hey, do you want me to jump in here?
Thank you.
Okay, no problem. So the volume factor is the annual process that we go through. Like Mr. Ford brought up, was that it's a process of taking the two lowest billing cycles, full billing cycles, taking the average of those periods, and saying that's your sewer average volume. That's going to be used to multiply by the rate per gallon used. So we have to have a cutoff period that you use to evaluate the last full year, to find those two lowest full billing cycles. And so that's our cutoff, is that September. So we can initiate this now, which is just saying we're going to compare those two numbers, which we already have for all of our customers. But that cutoff for that volume factor to be applied for the next year is going to happen on that September billing.
That makes sense to me, and thank you for that explanation. If I was just reading this as a member, an outsider looking at it, it would seem like by proposing to change it so that the volume factor is no longer just the bottom two months, two billing cycles of usage, but it could also be the lower of the two. It seems like we're making a change to the definition of volume factor. And it would seem to me like this is saying we would do changes like that right before September. So anyway, it just looks a little confusing, but I guess I'm getting my head around it.
Any other further questions? Okay, let's bring us over to public comment. If there's any public comment on there, Ms. Burgess, would you kindly?
Thank you, Mayor Moore. At this time, I see no public comment.
Thank you so much. So I don't have any questions on this. And if nobody else has any further questions on this, I would be looking for a motion.
Hey, this is Councilmember Harvey. Introduce an ordinance amending and rescating portions of Chapter 13.42.060 of Title 13 of the Katari Municipal Code to revise how sewer service charges are calculated.
I'd be happy to second that. This is Vice Mayor Landman.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a pro-call vote, please?
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Burgess. And now we will move on to our regular agenda item. And the first one is informational update on the eviction moratorium and rental assistance. And I believe this is you, Mr. Obit.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So back on January 11th of this year, at the city council meeting, the city council, Councilmember Sparks requested the staff bring back an informational update on the status of the eviction moratoriums as they apply in Katari. And this is all in the staff report, or actually, most of what I'll tell you is already in the staff report. One thing I do want to point out is that there was an updated FAQ that was provided by Sonoma County Legal Aid that was sent out and attached to the packet. But it's basically an updated FAQ that compiles with SB 91, which is the state law passed in January, which I'll talk about in a moment. All right, so a short walk down Marmory Lane, back in March of 2020, which seems like a decade ago, but was less than a year ago. Governor Newsom issued an executive order which authorized local jurisdictions to suspend evictions of tenants for non-payment of rent if the non-payment is a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. So basically, this is like an occupied part of state law. So normally, the state would be the preeminent controller of this type of thing. But the executive order allowed local jurisdictions to step in in what would traditionally be an area of state law and issue local local ordinances to suspend evictions. On March 24th, Sonoma County, the Board of Supervisors adopted an ordinance, which they called the Emergency Eviction Defense Ordinance, which created an affirmative defense for any residential tenant who can demonstrate that they have received a notice of eviction for failure to pay rent, and that such failure is related to a substantial loss of income or cost, medical costs related to the coronavirus pandemic. And this emergency ordinance was was worded to continue until 60 days after the termination of the local disaster declaration by the county. And that was issued in March, and it still is in place now. So that disaster declaration still is in effect. In the fall and August, at the end of August of last year, Governor Newsom signed AB 3088, which was titled the Tenant, Homeowner, and Small Landlord Relief and Stabilization Act of 2020. And it basically added a state kind of layer to the eviction protections, which basically states that no tenant can be evicted before September 1st of 2021 as a result of rent owed due to COVID-19-related hardship between March and August, if provided the tenant can provide declaration of hardship according to the timelines in the bill. For COVID-19-related hardship between September 1 and January 31st, tenants must pay at least 25% of the rent due to avoid eviction. And while tenants are still responsible for paying unpaid amounts to landlords, those unpaid amounts cannot be the basis for an eviction. One of the attached documents to the staff report is a sample declaration form that tenants can use just as an example of what they would give to their landlord to demonstrate that they are unable to pay rent because of some COVID-related reason. At the end of January of 2021 this year, the governor signed SB 91, which extends the eviction moratorium for non-payment statewide until July 1, 2021, and sets the repayment period. Sort of hinges on what the counties were doing. So in Sonoma County, that deadline gets, the repayment period deadline gets pushed out to August 31st of 2021. Every county had a little bit of a different deadline there, depending on what kind of eviction protections they had in place at the time of SB 91. But for Sonoma County, which is what we care about, it's August 31st, 2021 at this point. Unless that gets further extended by an operation of state law. But as of today, that's where it is. So under the current state law, non-payment for rent for the period of September 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, cannot be the basis for eviction in Sonoma County. And SB 91 also removes the ability of landlords to assess and collect late fees, and establishes the State Rental Assistance Program, which allocated part of the federal CARES money. There was a reallocation of CARES money in December. So the state got a big chunk of that. Through this program, through SB 91, the state allocated 2.6 billion of that federal money to rental assistance in California. And it's to target the tenants most at risk due to unpaid rent, in addition to extending assistance to property owners who agree to waive 20% of unpaid rent. So it's both to assist the lower-income tenants, typically 80% AMI, you know, 80% of the median area income is the low-income standard that's typically applied for these rental assistance programs. And for the landlords, some of this money is also available if they agree to basically take a 20% haircut on the unpaid rent. There are existing, as my understanding, there's existing challenges, both to the county eviction protection ordinance and SB 91. But as of right now, there's not, those are not, they haven't been resolved, so it's unclear. If that'll change anything. So just recently, on February 9th, 2021, the Board of Supervisors enacted a replies to urgency ordinance. It was an unanimous vote that broadened tenant protections beyond what's under state law. That is also attached to the staff report, that revision to their urgency ordinance. And my understanding, I'm certainly not an expert in this area of law, but my understanding from that meeting was that some of the broader protections include, that aren't covered by state law, include protections, basically, what don't allow evictions if there's been violations of the lease, if tenants cause a nuisance, refusing to renew the same lease on the same term, subletting, or other no-fault reasons such as a substantial remodel by the homeowner. So this is what they basically call a just cause type ordinance. And essentially, what that means is that the only legal way to remove a tenant would be because they're physically threatening people, or there's a documented health and safety issue that would require that tenant to be moved out of the unit. Otherwise, there's pretty much, there's pretty much no other reason that the landlord can use to evict somebody. The one carve-out that the Board of Supervisors did do is they added what they call an Ellis Act carve-out. And that is a piece of state law that basically says that that if you own property and you want to sell the property, or you want to move back into the property, those are legal reasons to evict a tenant. The Board of Supervisors, when they enacted the urgency ordinance revision in February, felt that if they didn't include that, it probably would have been found not legal. So also, as part of that February action by the board, the supervisors also requested county staff to try to understand the scope of evictions in Sonoma County by working with the, you know, multitude of nonprofits or government entities to try to collect any available data to understand if the ordinances are helping renters and not having unintended consequences. There was significant discussion about a lot of the landlords in Sonoma County are so-called mom-and-pop type landlords. So they're not corporate-owned, they're like, say, you know, retired couple that owns one or two properties. I guess that they make up the bulk of the landlords in this county. So the Board of Supervisors is trying to get a firmer grasp on sort of both how the rental protections are helping the renters and how the rental protections are harming or not harming the landlords. Because as I found, and I think as the county staff found, is there there is really no single good source of information for what's going on in terms of evictions and these types of actions. One thing that is readily available to us at the city, is just a surrogate, if it is a surrogate, is our utility customers. So we can look at that data at least and see if there's any trends or anything troubling there. And when we looked at our utility customers, so we have about 2,500 utility customers in total. And on the residential side, we had 43 delinquent accounts. 34 are what we call regulars. In other words, they're regularly delinquent even before COVID. So that doesn't seem unusual because they've always been delinquent even before COVID. We had six accounts that are new, six residential accounts that are new, that aren't typical delinquent accounts. We had six accounts that are new, six residential accounts that are new, that aren't typical delinquent accounts. The total unpaid, because as you know, the council took action last year to, to not shut off services for unpaid accounts, so, so we don't do that. The unpaid balance for residential customers currently, or at least as of February, is about forty-two thousand dollars. On the commercial side, we have three delinquent commercial accounts, two regulars that are typically delinquent. And then one sort of new cus, new commercial customer that's not typically delinquent, but that one is kind of an unusual case because we have, the water agency serves water directly to some customers outside our city limits. And through an agreement with the water agency, we bill them, so they're, they're within our billing system. And it's one of those customers, the water agency did something with the meter and it created a a large unpaid account that we're working out with the water agency. But with regard to the two regulars, it's about two thousand dollars in unpaid water bills. So nothing, anyway, my takeaway, at least from looking at our utility customers, if that's any indication, is that there's nothing too alarming there compared to what it, what it could have been. So there's a lot of overlapping, there's, I just talked about the state and local actions. There was, there was also, you know, the CDC had issued an eviction moratorium, there's some federal stuff going on. The Biden administration has some pending COVID relief legislation, which would, again, extend some eviction moratorium language nationwide. And there's a lot of overlapping legislative actions. And so one of the things the county did back in March of last year, when they initially did their eviction moratorium ordinance was, was also fund Sonoma County Legal Aid to help both tenants and landlords out in terms of understanding what the ordinance means and how it applies to them and, you know, navigating that process. Because it can be, especially when you start layering on state, state protections and maybe even federal protections, it can get kind of convoluted for the normal person to understand. So, so Sonoma County Legal Aid has been funded by the county to do that. And, and I should probably mention, I should have mentioned this upfront, but the county ordinance is a county-wide ordinance, so it does apply in Cattati, too. No question. All right, so, so that's one side, one side of the equation is the eviction protections. The other side is, how are people being, how are people getting assistance to pay for the rent? As I mentioned, although it does suspend evictions, it doesn't, you know, unless a landlord decides to take funding from the state through SB ninety-one and, and get some rent payment through that mechanism, in which case they have to take a twenty percent haircut on the unpaid rent. Otherwise, the tenant is still, still owes all the rent. It's not, they don't get forgiven by the, you know, they're, they're not forgiven for the rent, they just are protected from eviction. So so the state, well, really through the federal government, there's been a lot of money coming through the CARES Act and then the reauthorization of the CARES Act in December. Some directly from the federal government and some from the state that have been allocated for rental assistance. So these are for people generally, as a general rule, eighty percent of AMI income level, lower-income households. They're eligible for rental assistance so they can receive some assistance there. They don't have to try to pay it, hopefully don't have to try to pay it all back when eviction moratoriums eventually rest. So there is one typo on this, this is packet page ninety-nine. The total, I don't know, I don't know how, I came up with fifteen-point-seven-seven, it's actually thirty-five-point-seven-seven million. But it, so that's made up of a, of a series of different funding sources. The US Treasury had two sort of tranches directly. A two-point-three-seven million dollar initial rental assistance amount that, that was originally, all this, all this money back in March from the federal government originally had a end-of-calender year, so December thirtieth deadline on it. So the two-point-seven went out and the nonprofits that are listed there, Petaluma People's Services got six-hundred thousand dollars of that, they're the nonprofit that would primarily serve the Cattati area, this area. But that two-point-three-seven million was, I think, largely expended by the end of the calendar year. Because of that deadline, nobody knew that the federal government was going to extend the deadlines until the very last minute in December. So they were, you know, racing to not have to give the money back and try to get the rental assistance money out. Also on the heels of that was CDBG, this is Community Development Block Grant money. CEV is a, is a special COVID pot of money through CDBG. That funding source comes through Housing and Urban Development, the federal agency. So HUD allocates that directly through the county. So these are all directly to the county, all these sources I'm talking about. So the, the HUD money is what's being used currently. It's currently out there with nonprofits and they're using it for rental assistance. And then in December, another sort of tranche of money, the fourteen-point-seven, came through the US Treasury directly to the county. And the state through SB ninety-one added another fifteen-point-eight, which is also federal money, but they passed it through to Sonoma County. That's part of the two-point-six billion in total statewide. The county's part of that was the fifteen-point-eight or three-point-five million in total. When you add up the Treasury money and the, and the SB ninety-one state kind of reallocation. So that thirty-point-five is sitting there, I think, over half of it's in the, in the, in the county's sort of bank account, so to speak. The other half is coming. And they're looking to reallocate that or get it out to nonprofits for rental assistance. In the, just in terms of overall money, I, I'm done, obviously, I'm focusing direct, you know, directly on rental assistance money. For the original CARES Act, the county got about, I think, about fifty million in total, which was used for a variety of other purposes as well. And for the CARES Act, too, the reauthorization, they got another, the county's receiving another directly thirty-point-five million. That was the combination of the Treasury money plus the fifteen-point-eight from the state. One of the things, so just one nuance here that I thought I'd mention with regard to this CARES reauthorization money and the SB ninety-one money is that the SB ninety-one has some criteria attached to it. So there's the, the state bill, SB ninety-one requires landlords receiving rental assistance to forgive twenty percent of the back owed rent. That isn't, that is not a requirement of the federal part of the money, the, the other fourteen-point-seven. But the county is looking, at least the indications are from the county, that they're going to apply the same state criteria to both pots of money, even though the federal government doesn't strictly require that. You know, the states, or the county's indicated they don't plan, at least at this point, to opt into the state's rental assistance program. One of the things the state was talking about or is doing is they're, they're going to be running a statewide rental assistance program. That counties can opt into or not. Sonoma County is apparently not opting into that, and they're just going to use the money directly through the CDC, the county CDC. And one more, just nuanced to this, I hope I'm just not totally confusing the hell out of everyone here. But CDBG money, which is allocated through, through HUD, that money is allocated to the urban county, which means it's the unincorporated county plus the seven smaller and medium-sized cities that pool our populations collectively to receive that money through the county. The City of Santa Rosa and the City of Petaluma are, are called entitlement jurisdictions. And so they receive their own rental assistance money and other direct federal assistance. So the CDBG money that's currently in play right now in terms of rental assistance, that can only be used, our pot, the one I'm talking about here, the two-point-nine million, can only be used in the, what's called the urban county, so unincorporated county plus the seven smaller cities. Santa Rosa and Petaluma are get, like I said, giving their own pot of money and they only can use their shares within their jurisdiction limits. The Treasury money and the state money, they don't have those kind of geographic boundaries on those dollars, so they're countywide. I'll skip over the, the application process because it's nothing really too exciting there. But one thing I will just mention, I touched on it, is that President Biden is currently in Congress is working on a two-trillion-dollar COVID relief package that, as currently written, does include an existing extended eviction and foreclosure moratoriums. And and it's interesting, it said that it could continue applications for forbearance on federally guaranteed mortgages until the end of September. My understanding on the mortgage side of things is right now that, that banks, at least in California, are highly encouraged to work with their, their mortgage holders to try to work out a forbearance if they can't pay. So these are like the landlords, right, that own the properties? I'm not totally clear if the federal legislation would actually make that a federal mandate or not, but, but right now, my understanding is that it's voluntary. And if it's, if it is, two trillion dollars is significantly more money than has been allocated previously. I think the first CARES Act was under a billion dollars, I think it was like nine-hundred million, something like that nationally. So this is a significant increase if this actually gets approved as, as written. One more thing I will, I will say, this is in the staff report, but this might be of interest on the, on the business side of things. So with the CARES Act, the, the county, like I said, the county is the primary recipient of all this federal aid. So they allocated of the original fifty, fifty-one million they got back in March of twenty twenty from that initial CARES authorization. They allocated about one-point-five million to small business grants that was administered through the Economic Development Department of the county. And these are small businesses, generally what that means is less than thirty employees, less than a million dollars in revenue. It may be of interest to, to this group that we had about twelve, we had, not about, we had twelve Cattati businesses that received grants through that program. Separately, through the Small Business Administration, the, there was the Payroll Protection Program, which are basically forgivable loans. And it's a little, it's a little convoluted to kind of piece it all together, the way the federal government reports these numbers. But they basically break it into forgivable loans that were under a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and forgivable loans that were more than a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, that's how they report it, that's how the Small Business Administration reports it. So for the group of, for the group under a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in forgivable loans, we had a hundred-and-ninety-nine Cattati businesses receive those. That amounted to seven-point-three million dollars to Cattati businesses. And about two-hundred-and-seventy million countywide in that under a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar group. For forgivable loans over a hundred-and-fifty thousand, we had thirty-two Cattati businesses receive that. And that amounted to about twelve-point-eight million to those thirty-two businesses. So in total, in Cattati, we had two-hundred-and-thirty-one businesses. And we, and just as a point of reference, we have about three-hundred-and-fifty business licenses that we have issued within the city limits. So we have about two-hundred, we had two-hundred-and-thirty, two-hundred-and-thirty-one businesses out of about three, three-hundred-and-fifty businesses that are licensed in this, in Cattati, which is about two-thirds of our businesses, receive some amount from the PPP program. With a total of about a little over twenty million dollars in forgivable loans. And one last thing before I conclude, we didn't, we weren't totally shut, the cities weren't totally shut out from all federally. We got ninety thousand dollars from the state. And as I think you all recall, last fall, when, when we knew we got ninety thousand dollars, we reallocated a hundred percent of that to buy tents and install tents downtown, as well as waive staff fee, state, waive fees and staff time for outdoor events and kind of the kind of use permit costs and stuff that businesses would normally have to pay for, so. It's a long staff report, a lot of information, but I, that's about it, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Obeded. I don't know, can I remember Harvey?
Thank you, Mayor Moore. So Jamie and I have a few questions. One, you talk about the Ellis Act, that landlords, if they're selling their property or they're taking it off the rental market. Who, if anyone is watching that to ensure that that's exactly what's happening? Because someone could tell someone that's renting, oh, well, we're going to move back into it, and in fact, they don't move back into it. Is anyone monitoring that?
You know, I don't, I don't know that anyone's actually monitoring it besides the parties involved. And
But once you, once you've left as a renter, the likelihood of you going back and checking to see if that owner moved back in are like nil?
Yeah, I think in most cases, that's probably true. It, you know, for a landlord, it would, there would be significant risk if you just evict somebody and then move someone else back in a month or two later. If, if you get caught, right, it'd be a private party type thing, is my understanding.
I guess that's a business risks, but I think some of that's going on. It, it feels like there's a lot of money out there. And I see that with the CARES Act stuff, the county was pretty specific in, in how they spent all that money. It feels like all the rest of the money from all of these other things, there's not a very good accounting of it. Are, are they going to do a better job of that? I mean, you listed for the CARES Act, you know, so much went to West County Services and so much went to Friends of Sonoma and so much went to, but, but on the others, it's like, well, there's this money and.
Yeah, so the first round of CARES Act funding that, that was used for rental assistance, that's the original two-point-three-seven million.
Right.
That one went out to the, they had the NOFA, the nonprofits were all contracted to work with tenants and, and issue the rental assistance money. The, so the one, so that's the only, that, that was the primary one that's been already expended, so we have a good understanding of how that happened. That the CDBG money, our understanding is, so there's actually two parts to that, I don't want to overly complicate it, but there's a couple of rounds of CDBG money. The two-point-nine is actually comprised of two different rounds of funding. And my understanding is the first round has been allocated to existing contractors. Although we've asked, the cities, the cities have asked the county for what contractors and how much, we haven't received that yet. The second round of money still needs to be allocated to contractors. They, I don't know if you recall, but there was a, the CDC has an advisory body called the, the Towns Advisory Committee, Cities and Towns Advisory Committee, CTAC. And they had an emergency meeting at the end of December of last year to try to, to approve the allocation of this money for rental assistance so that the Board of Supervisors could put out a, the normal process is, is what they call a Notice of Funding Availability or a NOFA. And they, they were saying at the, at the end of December that they were going to put one out in early January and then award it by mid-January. Because there was a concern at the time that there would be a gap. The original two-point-three-seven was going to time out at the end of the calendar year, according to the original legislation. And there was a concern that there would be a gap in January of, of rental assistance funding. So that's why the emergency meeting at the CTAC and trying to get the CDBG money out there to the nonprofits so they could work with people to get rental assistance dollars out. It turned out at the eleventh hour in December that the, the reauthorization of the CARES Act extended that deadline, and so it no longer timed out. So there was still some residual money left from the original authorization. And the county ended up not putting out a NOFA. They ended up just contracting directly with existing contractors. It's been hard to, it's, it's been hard to get concrete information from the county, but that's, um, but the first tranche of that CDBG money.
What can we do to make sure that there's an accounting of that? Because that, that's kind of unacceptable that they're acting on our behalf, yet they're not accountable to tell us so that we're sure that, that, you know, number one, the monies are being spent appropriately. And number two, that they're being spent regionally on all of our behalf.
Yeah, the, the, uh, the CDBG money was kind of discretionary in terms of its use. The CTAC said that it should be used for rental assistance and the county seems to agree. The issue has been more about, uh, including us in the process and getting it out, um, in a timely fashion. So, um.
So can we send a letter to them? Do we have to, you know, ring some, you know, make some phone, uh, what do we have to do? Cause that, I mean, that's a lot of money that's sitting out there and, and people may need it and it, and it just feels like, oh, well, you know, this is almost March, next week, March. And the fact that we don't have an accounting of that, it is really, you know, not really very acceptable.
Yeah. Well, I mean, certainly getting the, the second, you know, getting the, understanding where the first tranche of CDBG money got allocated exactly. And, um, and expediting the second tranche and just expediting the other 30 million that are on, right on the heels of that CDBG money. I mean, yeah, probably a letter, um, could be helpful from the mayor, you know, to, uh, just express our concern that it doesn't get out quick enough.
So that may be something that we might want to do. Okay. The next thing is, um, the application process. It's pretty generic in here. It just says, "Application for rental assistance may be submitted by either the eligible household or landlord on behalf of the eligible household." But, um, it says households and landlords must apply through programs established, uh, by the county. But where is that information and why is that not being? I think it's tied to the other aspect because we don't know where the money's going. So people don't know where to apply. And if I had to guess, there's probably 25 different places that people could apply and each one has its own application.
All right. Um, so the county, um, the county website, and, uh, we linked it from our city website.
Okay.
If you, um, if you go to this bar city website, there's a banner right at the top for COVID information. You can click through to that. And you go down to, um, on our page, down to, uh, Housing and Renter Support.
Okay.
It'll take you to at least the most current, it's, it's, the county keeps current. And, um, it does have rent versus financial assistance for households. It has a list of different nonprofits. It's the list of nonprofits that are in the staff report, at least for this, um, initial funding, which supposedly were reauthorized with the first tranche of CDBG money. So that, I mean, that's how people would get there is they could get there through our website or get through there through the Soco Emergency site directly.
Okay.
And, and, and you just got to hope that the county keeps that current if new nonprofit end up being part of this.
Well, yeah, because it seems like if we don't know where the rest of that money, like the 1.8 million that, 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 that hasn't been allocated yet, if we don't know who it's being allocated to, it's kind of hard for people to know where to apply to if the county's not saying where they're allocating it to. So people could put in applications, say, oh, sorry, that money's all gone when they should have been applying, you know, over here rather than over here.
Yeah. I mean, right, right now, the best place I'm aware of is going to the Soco Emergency page, which, like I said, you can access through our page if people are looking.
And my last question, they keep talking about in these, uh, tenant evictions, uh, if a tenant is a high income and the landlord has proof of that before serving the notice, but it doesn't really, um, explain what that is.
Um, I think, yeah, I don't really know exactly what the definition of that is, but I think, um, the general process, if, um, if the landlord is, uh, looking to try to evict somebody, the, um, the renters need to, um, give the landlord, I believe, their monthly declarations of inability to pay due to COVID or medical expenses.
Only, they only have to provide documentation if they are deemed to be a high income person. And if the landlord has proof of that prior to serving the notice. But it doesn't really say, and it also says that then they have to include the high income language that's required on the notice that they serve. It's sort of convoluted.
Yeah, I know. I mean, under SB 91, there is, um, within the bill itself, there's a very specific language, like notice language that would be provided. But I, I, I don't know specifically, uh, Councilmember Harvey to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Moore.
Pardon me. Uh, Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you. Um, Damian, I just wanted to say thank you so much for bringing this, um, bringing this report and all, uh, there's a lot of details to wait there. So I appreciate you doing that. The, uh, I got a question about one of the requirements for receiving, um, rental support, which was that 80% or less of the median area, area median income. Uh, do, do you know off the top of your head what the, that official amount would be? Like, what is our area median income?
Well, so yeah, the AMI, it's, uh, uh, I think it's published, it's published annually by, uh, no, you might know it's HCD, is it Housing and Community Development, State Housing and Community Development that publish these, these things annually?
That's correct. And it's, it's tied to your, uh, family size. And I was just looking at it this afternoon. And so, sorry, I'm opening up a Excel, Excel file right now. I can email this out to the council. But for a family of four, very low income, $56,800, low income, $90,900, median income, $102,700, and moderate income, $123,250. And the area, the average AMI of all of that is 102,700, which I said.
Okay. So folks would need basically to make about 80,000 or less in order to qualify?
A family of, a family of four, yeah.
A family of four. I'm kind of wondering if, um, you know, if somebody was in market rate housing because they had a higher income and then they lost a substantial amount of income due to COVID. Making 80% of the area median would possibly no longer be sufficient to, to stay in their housing. And, and it's really difficult to find new housing. So I'm wondering if that 80% requirement is going to be the same, um, for the new, for the SB 91 and the CARES reauthorization funding? Do you happen to know if, if they're keeping the same income requirements on it?
Well, I, I know that's one of the benchmarks they use. Um, my understanding, and I, I don't know if there's something more specific in SB 91, um, but ineligible households is defined as a renter household and with at least one or, one or more of the individ, individuals meet the following criteria. 80% of AMI is one of them. Um, another one is demonstrating a risk of experiencing homelessness or housing instability. And then the third is qualifies for unemployment or has experienced a reduction in household income incurred significantly.
Sorry. Does that mean they all need, they need to meet all of those requirements or just at least one of them?
One of them is my understanding.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I was misreading that. I thought it meant they had to meet all. Okay.
Yeah. But I think, you know, especially if you're, especially if you are, um, I, I think the reality is if the, you know, that the people that are lower income in particular would be prioritized.
Right.
If there is a need to prioritize the money.
I had another question sort of following on what Councilmember Harvey was asking about the different places that you could apply to. Uh, you had mentioned that for people in Cattati, they would primarily be served by Pedaluma People's Services. If, if they were to, you, you know, if they go onto the Soco Emergency page that we link to now, it just lists out the four, um, places to call. So would someone in Cattati, could they apply to other places or would they be, if they called one of the other places, would they be directed to Pedaluma People's Services? Or how would they know which one to go to?
Yeah, I, you know, um, I, so I don't know for sure. I, I assume that most people would use Pedaluma People's Services because they're the local one. Although the money itself, um, certainly the 2.3 million originally is countywide. So, and I would think that no matter which one you apply to, you should be able to get funding through it because there's no geographic restriction on the money. Unless there's some sort of administrative restriction in the contract between the county and the nonprofit, but I'm not aware of any if there is one. Um, I, I would, again, I would hope that to the extent that if one of them like say runs out of money, that they would refer people to the others that may still have money. But, but honestly, I don't know. I don't know how that's actually working on the ground.
Okay. And lastly, I just want to say thank you for providing that update about how many businesses had received the, um, PPP money. That was really, um, illuminating. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council for Mr. Obed? Okay. Seeing none, I will see if there's any public comment or questions.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. For our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please hit the raise hand icon or dial star six from your telephone, correction, star nine from your telephone. And there is no public comment.
Thank you so much. Um, well, that's an informational update. Thank you, Mr. Obed. That's a lot of information to take in and hopefully those people that may need that assistance, uh, will be able to navigate through some of the, uh, myriad of options available. So, thank you so much.
Sure. And I, I will, um, just before we move off this one, I will just add that, um, we are like multiple times a week in contact with the county trying to, uh, piece this all together, what the county is working on and encouraging them. And I think if, uh, if it looks like things are getting stuck, then, um, you know, perhaps I will bring back the council some type of, uh, letter from the mayor, but, um, we'll just play that week by week, I guess, right now.
Thank you. So now we can move on to, uh, item 11B, award of the, uh, fiscal year 2020, 21, Citywide Traffic Safety Improvement Project Construction Contract. I'm assuming this is going to go back to Mr. Scott?
Actually, I'll present this one.
John Caldwell will be presenting this item. Thank you.
Sure. Throw me a curve.
Yeah. All right. So yeah, John Caldwell, civil engineer here in Public Works. I'm pleased to have the opportunity to give a brief presentation on this project. Citywide Traffic Safety Improvements Project 2.0. The project generally consists of installing an always stop at the intersection of West Sierra Avenue and West School Street along with safety enhancements to the crosswalk on West Sierra Avenue at Cypress Avenue. Thanks for pulling up that slide. That's just a vicinity map. We're requesting authorization to award the construction contract for this project to DC Electric as well as reallocate unspent funds from the recently completed 2020 Street Construction and Improvements Project to this project as well as to our Streets Repair and Maintenance Account as there have been a disproportionately high number of signs, light poles and other traffic devices knocked down this year by motorists. This Traffic Safety Improvements Project has been determined to be, uh, to be high priority based on input from the public and city council. Efforts were made to have these traffic safety improvements constructed last summer or fall as change orders to the 2020 Street Construction and Improvements Project being performed by Team Jalati. However, um, team's change order cost was excessive and securing the Caltrans encroachment permit for the always stop took much longer than expected. So it didn't work out to fit those in, um, and piggyback on the paving project from last year. Instead, staff prepared the bid documents for these two safety, um, improvements. And on February 9th, opened bids from seven contractors. As with many of our projects lately, the city again is benefiting from a competitive bidding environment and is moving forward with the lowest bid, which believe it or not is 41% below the engineer's estimate. It's been a good bidding environment for us, for people putting out projects. Contractors are hungry for work these days. The low bid was from DC Electric Group, who is the contractor that maintains the city's traffic signals and handles most of our emergency repairs. And the city has been satisfied with their work, um, to say the least. The always stop at West Sierra Avenue and West School Street addresses, um, the poor line of sight in both directions coming off West School Street as well as speeding traffic on West Sierra Avenue through that area. Lauren, if you wouldn't mind jumping to the next slide, which is a snip of the plans that W Trans put together for the always stop. Didn't all fit well on, in one image, but I got the, the main central portion showing the stop signs, the green bike lane, all that. The improvements at this intersection generally consist of installing stop signs facing both directions on West Sierra Avenue. A new raised traffic island to better delineate the drive idols for the eastbound traffic and those entering the freeway 101 South On Ramp. And, um, yeah, the green bike lane in the eastbound direction, advanced warning signage for the new stop signs, meaning stop ahead signs, you know, a few hundred feet in advance of the intersection on both sides. And as well as other miscellaneous striping and signage is involved in this prod, portion of the project. To help drivers adjust to the changed conditions, temporary changed conditions ahead signage with red flags in advance of each leg of the intersection will be posted for at least the first six months after the improvements are made. Also, we received a request to install flashing red beacons on the new stop signs and on the advanced warning sign for those entering the city from the west. Staff supports measures to improve visibility of the signage. We know that getting traffic accustomed to these changes is going to be a challenge and we're going to do everything we can to make it a smooth transition. So that's the West Sierra, West School Always Stop. The long awaited improvements, um, we know that are a very high priority and will be great to have done in the near future if approved. All right, Lauren, you can go ahead and jump to the next slide, which is just a snip of the design for the Crosswalk Safety Enhancements on West Sierra Avenue at Cypress Avenue. This portion of the work includes new rectangular rapid flashing beacons and curb ramps on both sides of the street, both sides of West Sierra. The existing, well, these figures north is generally facing up. The existing driveway approach on the north side of the street needs to be replaced for ADA conformance. And the ramp, there is. And the ramp, there is no currently no ramp on the south side. So the ramp proposed for the south side of the street is primarily to provide safe refuge for pedestrians on that side of the street. The project will also require moving the existing swinging vehicular gate at the park entrance. The southern end of Cater Park there near City Hall to accommodate the um ramp landing, the walkway that goes behind the ramp. There were, that will also be trenching for the electrical conduit to wire up the beacons. And minor striping will be done here as well, which includes the white shark teeth markings for yield, um, the yield markings in both directions. Excuse me. So that's a general overview of what the project entails. With funding, the city has two street capital improvements projects for this fiscal year. The uh twenty twenty street construction and improvements project that I mentioned earlier that was um completed this fall, worked on by Team Jalati, and this project, citywide traffic safety improvements project. The um, the former project, the twenty twenty streets project was completed last fall and fortunately left unspent funds. The uh safety project was budgeted for seventy thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. That budget amount was what was allocated for all the collective citywide traffic safety improvements that we had planned for this year originally. That's currently now down to about forty thousand dollars after completion of various other safety improvements projects earlier in the year. Therefore, staff is requesting a total project budget of one hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and ten dollars for this project. The the low bid from DC Electric was ninety three thousand two oh nine and eighty cents. And we're including a twenty five thousand dollar constr- construction contingency. That's where we get that one eighteen two ten. Which is to be comprised of the remaining traffic safety improvements funds plus seventy eight thousand, about seventy eight thousand two ten from the unspent roadway paving project. Additionally, the city's street operations and maintenance budget account, I should say, has been depleted due to an inordinate amount of hit and damaged traffic and safety devices this year. Staff is requesting the remainder of the unspent street project funds of about thirty three thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars to be applied to this operations account, the repair and maintenance account. These funds would immediately be used to replace the hit, the knockdown sign at Old Redwood Highway and Page Street and as well as repairs to the recently hit signal pole on Old Redwood Highway at Commerce Boulevard. These funds are being requested despite the city's efforts in collecting funds from the responsible parties, the motorists. However, these efforts take a long time and have uncertain outcomes. These fund transfers take into account the prior authorization to use eight thousand dollars of the unspent roadway paving project funds for the local road safety plan that we recently kicked off as well. So with these transfers, all of the budgeted street funds for safety projects will be accounted for and upon completion of this project um and the those repair and maintenance projects, this will conclude the traffic safety capital improvements uh plan for this year. Final slide, please, Lauren. So in conclusions, staff, to reiterate, staff is recommending um city council adopt a resolution awarding the citywide traffic safety improvements project construction contract to DC Electric, approve an appropriation of funds to the project account um as well as an appropriation of funds to replenish the streets repair and maintenance account. And finally, authorizing the city manager to execute the construction contract and any needed change orders to that contract up to the approved project budget amount. So that concludes my presentation. I hope my summary was clear and made sense. I'd be glad to take any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Appreciate that. It looks like we have a question from uh Vice Mayor Landman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three relatively quick questions for you, Mr. Caldwell. We'll start with the easy one, at least I hope the easy one. Do we have a rough idea when construction might start?
Yes, um, we've penciled in mid-March for start of construction and then I would imagine about a two-month construction period.
Perfect. Thank you.
So yeah, we're gonna, we're ready to run with it and we're excited to see these improvements get made as soon as practical.
Yeah, I think the respective neighborhoods, both for Cypress with that particular part of the project as well as over here by West School, have been concerned about both these areas and would be very happy to see them. I wanted to ask you a question on the West School and West Sierra uh always stop. The the problem there always has been twofold. One, there's a line of sight issue. Um, you, if you pull up to the stop sign in West School, you really can't see very well, certainly. Anybody on West Sierra heading west, you can't see them to the last minute. And it's very difficult still to see people coming from eastbound too. They don't show up terribly well. Uh, but the other part of that problem, it's because of the speed they're traveling. Uh, people, they think they're leaving town, they've been stepping on it. It's natural for people to drive that way all the time. Likewise, people coming into town, they know there's no stop signs. They're not used to really having to slow down yet, so they really haven't begun to slow down. I I I think frankly Cypress suffers from this too. But what I wanted to ask you about is I looked at drawings closer tonight and what you showed. I could see that it looks like we should see a significant improvement in line of sight uh for eastbound traffic. But as I look at this, it looks like the stop sign at West School should have a pretty good eyeball on what's happening with that stop sign coming for westbound uh too. Uh, now I can't, of course, I can't visualize what the freeway overpass is doing, but do we actually have a line of sight as well there now in addition to the safety of making people stop so they're not traveling so quickly?
Um, I I did calculations and I I did get a number for what I approximated the line of sight or the site distance was when you're sitting on West School Street looking both directions. And obviously, that line of sight was much less than the acceptable level. But however, with installation of this always stop, um, it doesn't appear to, maybe I don't understand the question, but uh doesn't appear to lengthen that line of sight. It just kind of takes that issue out of the equation by forcing.
Oh, I would imagine a substantive improvement, uh, because really the biggest part of that has been the speed. Once people are used to stopping there and everybody will have to be careful and I certainly support all the safety measures you've discussed for uh initiating this and getting our citizens used to it. I I I think it's going to be much better because of that. As it exists right now, there's nothing to be done. You can't move the stop sign at West School out any further to have a better line of sight because then you're essentially going to push that stop sign in the in the crosswalk there out into oncoming traffic. So your best bet is to reduce the speed, but I was just looking at the drawing and the placement of the stop sign really looks pretty optimal. I have a sense it's going to be improved light of sign, I believe, for people to have a sense if there's somebody sitting there getting ready to leave. So at any, we'll pass on from that because that's good news either way. The last thing I wanted to ask you about was the other problem area, Cypress. It probably suffers kind of the same reason. People getting ready to leave town kind of think they're out of town and they're already speeding up. And people coming into town, a lot of them haven't really slowed down fully yet. Uh, I wanted to ask what's next steps might look like. Obviously, we, with the new safety measures and visibility measures you're putting in and the two new stop signs, I think we're going to see a slowing of traffic there. I'm very hopeful that will be the result. But if that doesn't bring about the safety improvements we are looking for, would the next step be a three-way stop there? And what would be the date, the sorts of data and the timeline we'd use to kind of measure this and see if we're getting the result we want here?
Right, good question. We actually.
Could I answer that?
Okay.
It's, it's, so this is where where this project uh lands in the great sort of plan, uh scheme of things. And uh that requires us to back up a little bit. Uh, the twenty twenty streets project was a much larger project and because of the uncertainty of revenues, we uh cut that in half and we did the the name's up streets. But the, but the entire project was designed and it included La Plaza as well as West Sierra Avenue, all the way from Old Redwood Highway down to West School Street. And so that project, the the elements that you're talking about, uh, Mr., a council member, Landman, are, have been designed. They're they're on the shelf in a plan set. And um we have a significant road diet for West Sierra Avenue. We've got striping that narrows the travel lanes uh in deference to a much better uh striped and a buffer zone for a um class two bike lane all the way along West Sierra Avenue. It 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 gives a lot of attention to the East School Street, West Sierra intersection, three-way stop there, which from what we hear gets run a lot. People just run right through that.
You would think by the police station, people would be that quite that cavalier, but there you go.
Right. So uh with the narrowing of the lanes, increased striping, we've got the green bikes uh lane, striping right at that intersection proposed, um pedestrian level lighting and flashing beacons for the stop. We're really going to make, want to make that three-way stop, just jump out at people. So uh those plans are are in existence and we, just last Friday, we submitted, staff submitted a quick strike application. So we're keeping.
Oh, perfect.
That that will be, you know, give us some some money for that project.
Well, I'm really pleased to see that we're able to take advantage of that quick strike money. I wasn't sure if we'd be able to leverage quick enough, so I'm glad you have these plans ready to go. Uh, those are great answers. I appreciate it. I'll just leave with the typical thing I always pass on to the city manager and threw him to the police chief along with us. I'd encourage regular dependable, very visible enforcement. And I think uh we're going to see some improvements in this area for everybody in Kattati. It'd be a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Landman. Uh, Councilmember Harvey.
Uh, thank you for the presentation, John. I'm glad to hear that there's going to be temporary change of condition elements put in there for six months because that was really kind of my big concern was that whenever there's something new and change that people, you know, ignore what's there. So I'm I'm glad to see that we're putting some extra um elements there to make sure that people are are aware of that. Uh, my second question kind of tags on to Vice Mayor Landman. I I don't know that it got fully addressed and that's at at Cypress and West Sierra. He had kind of asked what would raise it to the next level um i- if people aren't stopping for pedestrians, what has to happen? Um, or what changes do we have to see in order to do something different? Because it's really hard to get in and out of Cypress. So can you help with that?
Yeah, I, I, again, I'd like to step in.
Sure.
So um, up to this point, we've had a citywide safety project every year. It's it's programmed into our CIP and it it gets, it responds to public input and the safety measures that are brought to, you know, the forefront. And um just, just a month ago, we had the kickoff meeting to the uh local road safety plan effort, which is a more comprehensive citywide effort looking at our collision database, identifying hotspots in the city, including Cypress. And then once that happens, we're uh will match those hotspots up with countermeasures to reduce the collision potential, to make those intersections and those stretches of roadway safer. And again, we 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 received um a seventy two thousand dollar grant for that effort and we're really happy about that. Um, and it's underway. Um, so that's, I think, where, that's the best way to answer your question. It's going to be in the deliberation of that plan, which is going to come out with a series of improvements in the CIP for safety that we'll use as as our plan moving out into the future.
Well, that that's good to hear because as you well know, when we did the um the changes to the speed limits, I don't know, year ago, two years ago, whenever it was, I I got even more concerned because they raised the speed limit on West Sierra. And I know you don't have a whole lot of control in how those get get um done, but um, you know, it it now it's five miles more per hour faster than it was before, which leaves people even less time to get in and out of that street as well as Valparaiso. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, I um, I will just jump in real quick and just say too that uh that the engineering traffic study that you're referring to, Councilmember Harvey, is uh probably a year or two away again. So um, it's a, it's good timing for these safety measures and that was one of the one of the factors um in trying to get them implemented sooner rather than later so that we have a a better baseline to conduct that survey when we need to update those.
Yeah, I I mean, I I think that 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 was and has always been pretty enlightening because it's not exactly intuitive how that works. You know, the fact that it's, well, what what speed do people generally use on a road? Not necessarily what you want them to use. And and that was a little counterintuitive to me.
Thank you very much. Any other further questions for staff on this? Okay, I'll go ahead and open up for public comment if there's anyone there. Ms. Bridges, if you'd be so kind.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. I see no hands raised.
Thank you. So um, if there's no further questions and we don't have any public comment on there, I would certainly entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor? I'd be happy to uh move a resolution. One, awarding the fiscal year twenty twenty one citywide traffic safety improvements project construction contract to DC Electric Group Incorporated. Two, approving an appropriation of funds to the project account. Three, approving an appropriation of funds to replenish the streets repair and maintenance account. And four, authorizing the city manager to execute the construction contract and any needed change orders to that contract up to the approved project budget amount.
I would second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Uh, can we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much. Another unanimous vote. I love it. Um, next, we're going to move on to our city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor Members of Council. So, update on COVID um related things. Um, so the county vaccination program is still working through special higher risk groups. Um, we are currently in tier one B, uh, tier one, I think is what they call it. It's over uh people over seventy, ag and food manufacturing. We are currently in tier one B, uh, tier one, I think is what they call it. It's over, uh, people over 70 ag and food manufacturing workers. And in terms of our color tier, the county is still in the purple tier because, um, well, due to the number of cases per hundred thousand, so we're right about, right under 14 cases per hundred thousand population. We need to be at or below seven per hundred thousand to move to the next lower tier, which is red. The good news is that the case rate seems to be trending downwards, so hopefully that trend continues. The other metric that's, that's used by the state for the color tier is a positivity rate. Our positivity rate is, is quite low. It's in, I think in, uh, orange. So the positivity rate is not the issue, but the case rate still is. We are planning to install another 20 by 60 tent by flagship Tapperham tomorrow, so that will go in tomorrow morning. Um, and then, uh, if anyone's noticed, flags are at half mast this week, um, per a presidential order. And unfortunately, the reason for this is that we are, I guess, just about to this week pass 500,000 deaths due to COVID in the United States. Um, so flags are being lowered in honor of those lost to the pandemic. Uh, as mentioned earlier tonight, we are also working on the local road safety plan and, um, right now, the city's collision history is being analyzed and the city staff were reviewing the beta version of the, um, what's called the LRSP Local Road Safety Plan website. And we expect it to go live sometime next week. The website describes the plan, presents collision histories on a map and provides a map for the public to pin any locations on the street network where they have safety concerns. So you'll be seeing some, uh, social media information coming out on that soon, once that goes live. And, um, uh, dry conditions also persist in Sonoma County, so, um, all residents and businesses are encouraged to use water wisely. There are no restrictions, restrictions at this time, but, um, shaping up to be a dry year so far. So if you haven't done so, you can sign up for leak alerts by going to kattatiwaterinsight.com and you get real time leak, any real time leak alerts. Work is also continuing on the, on our cottage ordinance and developing objective design guidelines for housing development. The current plan is to bring them to Planning Commission, um, in mid-March. The cottage ordinance has been through two workshops. Um, so I think the mid-March meeting will be a decision meeting and so then the council will see that after that. We're also on social media running weekly, uh, city financial trivia on our social media pages and, um, uh, residents can submit answers to the trivia and you're eligible to win a gift card for a local business. Winners are announced weekly when the new trivia questions are posted. So keep your eyes peeled for that. On, um, and in terms of, uh, awards on February 9th, uh, our, uh, one of our staff randomly selected one lucky winner for an iPad giveaway, um, that we got through our accounting software company that was generously donated that for the iPad giveaway. The drawing was in, um, the drawing was intended to increase the number of auto pay customers and we actually were very successful. We got a 70% increase in customers. So it's a good thing. It makes paying bills more convenient for our customers. We also have, um, as I think all the council knows, we have budget workshops scheduled coming up soon. So please check out the calendar online for the, uh, these meetings, which will be Zoom meetings and learn more about the fee budget process. Uh, later this week on Thursday, the Measure B Oversight Committee is, um, meeting to, um, to look at the expenditures for the audited fiscal year 1920. So, um, the council can expect to see that Measure B report coming to, um, you guys soon. On the police side of the house, I'm going to add in on some things that I'm sure people are curious about. So, um, there's various programs and initiatives that city staff are working on as directed by city council at the end of last year. And, um, we do expect to have an annual report to the community from the, from the police chief. We're targeting right now the second meeting in March to present that, um, annual report to the community. We continue to look for and have implemented training and de-escalation and understanding bias for our officers to ensure we meet the needs and expects, expectations of our residents. This includes training by, um, uh, most recently training by REMF and ParsAC, um, which is implicit bias training for law enforcement executive staff. And, um, I've heard nothing but good things from people that have been in that. Um, and, uh, I think our own staff felt that was a very, um, it was a very good, uh, very good training. We're also continuing to do system testing and data validation for, uh, RIP implementation with the consortium, our public safety consortium that we're a member of. So it turns out, interestingly enough, State Department of Justice, um, didn't want to accept RIPA data early. Um, as, as you all know, we're on schedule. Actually, all the agencies in Sonoma County are on schedule to implement January 1, 2022. So there was a bit of a negotiation that had to go on with state DOJ to take, um, data early. Um, they were, they agreed to start taking data officially from us on, um, July 1, so they agreed to a six-month early start. I expect that the systems itself, um, may be, uh, operational before that, but that's the official date in terms of state department of justice of our data. Um, and I'll obviously give the council an update once we're officially live on that. And, um, you also, um, have, I think, heard through news and maybe through some of your peers that Santa Rosa and Petaluma have been working on a pilot's, uh, pilot cahoots program. And, um, recently Vice Mayor Landman, um, had connected with this, with the mayor of Petaluma to inquire about the planned program. And, um, as a result of that, I followed up and spoke with their city manager about, um, the planned program that they have and, um, and, uh, start exploring if there's any, any opportunities to work together on this. It's just purely explorational at this point. But Petaluma is working with the Whitebird Clinic, which is the, um, cahoots administrator up in Oregon that everyone, um, I think is well aware of. So they're working with the Whitebird Clinic to assist in program design and to, um, on how to manage low-level, uh, mental health issues in a more effective way. Also separately, you know, last fall, the county, um, residents did approve Measure O, which does create some dedicated countywide funding in part for programs like this that the county, I believe, well, um, that the county could use for MST or a program like this. So, um, that's also another, um, sort of factor out there that is, um, aligning up in sort of the positive category. And then lastly, um, although I don't, I'm not aware of, uh, its chances of success, there is also pending federal legislation that could potentially fund, uh, this type of program. But in any case, we're tracking all that and, um, I am, you know, talking with Petaluma to see if there's opportunities there. Obviously, if there is any opportunities that, um, that look like they might be, uh, uh, might be good, then I'll certainly bring it to the council and we can have a discussion about that before we do anything else. But, um, we are hoping to, uh, you, you know, sort of in general, we're hoping to develop improved procedures and best practices when interacting with people who are in mental health crisis, including something like a cahoots model, which would be responsible by non-sworn personnel, um, provided it's safe for everyone. So, um, I think there's a lot of energy there countywide and, um, just, I guess, suffice it to say that we're, we're in the mix at a staff level, working to try to, um, see if we can line up something ideally. The ideal scenario would be a countywide program, um, but, um, currently in conversation with Petaluma. So there's that. And then on, uh, lastly, on recreation, on February 12th, we celebrated, uh, the end of our first Love Your Neighbor Week by delivering over 80 Valentine grams to people in our community and each gram included a flower, cookie, candy, stickers and a personalized card. And it was, um, great to see so many people spreading love throughout Kattati and we expect to do it again next year. Uh, last week, we held two workshops to show potential Kattati Park playground designs and collect community feedback. And, uh, if you missed the meetings, don't worry because we're also going to be doing an online survey. Uh, that'll be coming out soon. So you can find that survey on our website and also on social media within the next week. And you can have your voice heard on what you'd like to see in your new Kattati Park playground. Spring break camp registration is open. We will host an in-person camp during the week. Children are off from school. Obviously, we'll be following all health guidelines to provide the most safe and fun environment possible. Space is limited, so sign up early to ensure your spot. We also look forward to bringing our drive-in movies back in March and continuing through the spring. So, we'll be doing all these as well as other, uh, virtual and socially distanced programs. We're already talking about Easter now as well. So there's a lot going on there. And then if you have any questions about these programs or any of other, any ever other recreation events, you can always contact Ashley Wilson, 665-4222 or A. Wilson at kattatisid.org or just go to our website or our social media pages. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Robert. I don't know if council has any questions at this time. No. Okay. I can open up to the public if they have any questions, but I guess we're going to address that with non-action agenda items. So right now we will go to city council member reports. Who would like to be first in line? Councilmember Harvey, I'm shocked.
Why are you shocked?
I thought it was, uh, I thought it was to make a motion or to second a motion.
Well, you don't have a motion for me to make or to second, so you'll have to just do with my council report.
You're so much.
On the 18th, we had the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency meeting and the key highlights there is we had a really good presentation on how we might possibly fund a household hazardous waste facility for the Northern County and/or one bigger one for the whole county. So it was a really good presentation on what our options are. Obviously, it's a big ticket item. We're looking at anywheres between like eight and 12 million when all is said, done, said and done. And that's dependent upon, the reason there's such a big number and such a big gap has to do with, well, what's already there? Where is it? What does it have? What do we need to do? Those kind of things. So it's, it's sort of a really big swing there depending upon what's available. And right now, um, the only area that is, uh, being looked at is up sort of by the airport. And it has to be not within their airport planned. Um, the county has an airport plan. It has to, um, be in there. So it was good information. Um, and, uh, at least we know we have capabilities to be able to finance that. The other thing that they went over was their, uh, work plan for 2122. I think the things that hit us are going to be the impacts of, uh, 1383, which I think we should see a presentation on. Moving forward, it sounds like they're, um, getting a little bit closer. It's baby steps on composting facility, which I know everybody wants. So little steps there. So there's a lot of big things happening. So, um, more to come on those. I attended the, uh, workshop on the Kattati Park. That was really, um, interesting to see the different designs and what was really pretty awesome was, um, there were a few families that had their kids and it was great seeing the kids weigh in on the different things. So, so that was pretty exciting. And then last but not least, I attended the mayors and council members. Although it was Zoom, it was really nice to see the other mayors and council members that we really haven't seen in like a year. So it was really nice to, if nothing else, to see them virtually. So hopefully at some point we'll be able to get back, um, in person, but that was awesome. So that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey. Any other council member reports this evening? Vice Mayor Landman?
Nothing to report, but just a quick comment on mayors and council members. I attended too. It was good to see everybody. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Mayor Turner of Cloverdale. Managing those meetings via Zoom, uh, for particularly for the elections and the various ups, downs and many sideways, issues that arose during that process, he did, I thought, a, a quite commendable job and I just wanted to give him a virtual thumbs up. I have not, because of COVID, I have not had a chance to meet this person in person, but I look forward to it because I thought he did a very good job of running a difficult meeting. So a thumbs up there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Landman. Any other comments at this point or reports coming out from the council? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to, oh, there was something I do want to report. Weekly, we are having a mayor's yeah, informal conversation with various council members, uh, from time to time from the, from the county. And a lot of these issues come up. Um, it may be an opportunity as, uh, Councilmember Harvey suggested to, uh, talk about getting a, uh, some sort of reconciliation on some of these funds that have been received for the COVID release. So that will be on Thursday or, uh, yeah, Thursday afternoon. And then we also have another meeting coming up on the ad hoc committee for the continuum of care that addresses the homeless issues. So, uh, that'll be, uh, on Thursday at 7:00 AM if any of you guys are interested. So there's a couple of things coming up and then we can address some of those things. So I don't have anything else to report. And if nobody else does, I will move on to our public comment on non-action agenda items.
Mayor Moore, there is no public comment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bridges. And, um, any information received after the agenda was posted?
Nothing further.
Thank you very much. Well, um, again, thank you all for a great meeting. Thank your staff for all that information. At least we had a little break between five and seven. And, uh, I look forward to talking to you guys soon. And with that, I will adjourn, uh, adjourn the meeting at 8:56 PM. Thank you. Have a good night. All be safe.
Yes, everyone. Good night.
Good night.